Tonight at 7:00 PM at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect. This meeting will be held in a hybrid format where the committee members and the public choose to attend in person or remotely via Google Meet. This public hearing is being scheduled to accept questions and comments on an application for CPA funding submitted by Caritas Communities, Inc., excuse me, for the creation of affordable veterans' housing at 20 Vernon Street. Any questions and concerns can be directed to the CPC Development Department at Town Hall during normal hours. And so with that being said, just a little bit about format. So we're going to start out with a presentation from the applicant's Caritas. And then next, we will proceed to questions or clarification from CPC members. We'll also have some comments from the CPC Working Group and a little bit of explanation about what we've done since the last meeting. And then we'll take comments and questions from the audience. And I think we asked you all to sign in. I'm not sure where the sign-in sheet is, but awesome. So maybe if you could just share that with some of the members coming in. So at some point, I'll want to look at how many people are interested in providing comments. And then we'll try and apportion time. I want to make sure that everybody has time to ask questions and provide comments. Having said that, it looks like there's a lot of people signing up. And so I guess I will just ask you all, in deference to other people that want to provide comments, if you could keep your comments succinct, if you could attempt not to re-ask questions and really try and allow everybody time to speak. I also want to acknowledge that at some point, we may or may not be able to answer certain questions, and part of this is information gathering. And so if we don't have the answer to something, we're committed to get back in some way, shape, or form to provide the answers. The other thing I'll ask is that as you're asking questions or providing, certainly providing comments, but as you're asking questions, I would like you guys to direct those to me. And then if appropriate, we'll turn it over to Caritas, we'll turn it over to Planning, and whomever. And again, please know that we might not know the answer to everything, but we're committed to providing more information prior to town meetings so that everybody can make an informed decision. Does anybody from CPC want to add anything? Okay. Okay. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the Caritas Communities Group. And if you guys could introduce yourselves and let us know what pieces you are in terms of the project, and we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you, gentlemen.
My name is Greg Richen. I'm the head of real estate.
Speak to the mic, please.
Absolutely.
If I can't hear.
Hello?
My name is Greg Richen. I'm the head of real estate and chief financial officer.
So I'm just going to interrupt. You're facing away from everybody, which is really challenging. And I feel badly, like, is the microphone tied to the...
No, it's just...
Oh, okay, okay.
Maybe if he stands over there and that it projects...
How's that going to be for you, NCM?
Turn the podium around?
Turn the podium around? Okay. I think that's probably best. You know, it's better that we look at your backs versus the community.
You can face that, right?
Yeah, I think so, right? And please try and speak up to the best you can. Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I just wanted to introduce myself. My name's Greg Richen. I'm the head of real estate and chief financial officer at Caritas Communities. And then I'm going to let Frank, our executive director, introduce himself and introduce our organization.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. As Greg said, my name is Frank, Frank Connell. I am the executive director of Caritas Communities. And I'm very grateful for your giving us the time to present this evening. I've grown up my whole life sort of close to Norwood. When my wife and I first married in 2005, our first home was in Norwood, up on Normity Drive. My wife was a ER nurse at Norwood Hospital for 15 years until unfortunately the hospital closed. My father worked at St. Catherine's and St. Tim's Parish in Norwood. And actually, my sister and my brother-in-law and their five children are residents of Norwood. And one of the things that's always struck me about the town of Norwood is how welcome they, the community, are. At the time, we lived here, for my wife and I, this was home. And I think that's something that Norwood and Caritas Communities have in common, right? Caritas Communities is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit affordable housing organization. We have been in existence since 1985. We started off with a couple of triple-decker units in Dorchester and Quincy. These were converted to SRO, or single-room occupancy units, where each of the rooms within what was a three-bedroom apartment, each of those rooms became its own private rental unit. And really, the driving initial force was to provide safe, secure, affordable housing for the people of those communities in Dorchester and Quincy. You know, renting out SRO housing with communal bathrooms and kitchens, it really allows us to rent units to people who are most vulnerable, right? And even if they're working, earning minimum wage, housing is not affordability, is well without, not within their reach. And our model allows safe, secure housing, a private locked room, to be within reach for someone with limited needs. In the 39 years that we've been in operation, we have continued to grow, we've continued to acquire new properties. And what we look at every property is, as an opportunity to bring our mission to a broader group of people. You know, I'm very proud to say that in the 39 years that we've been operating, we have acquired 29 properties. We've never sold a property. That's not our mission. We look at every square foot of housing that we are blessed to operate and manage as a precious resource that we commit to the people that we serve. And so I'm very proud to say that we've been around that long and, you know, through up financial times and down, we've never sold a property and continue to use every room to the benefit of the people that we serve. In recent years, we've also grown in our model as well that, you know, we're no longer strictly focusing on the single-room occupancy model. We've started to acquire properties with studio units. We find that it affords the people who are renting there a higher degree of dignity, that they have their own private space, their private bathroom, private kitchen. You know, we see effects that you might not even, you certainly won't see on a pro forma for a property, but having your own kitchen means that the quality of your nutrition goes up, right? Because people are cooking at home and not microwaving at home. And so that's become very important as Greg and I took over as leadership to really evaluate that, you know, yes, the SRO model is less expensive, but the studio model is slightly more, but it affords the folks we serve a higher degree of dignity. Can we just move to the slide? Sorry about that. I sort of jumped right in about the... So while that's moving forward, you know, we're spread all throughout the greater Boston area. We have 79 units that are dedicated to veterans, most of whom are coming from a state of homelessness, whether they are chronically homeless, meaning homeless for greater than a year, or some other transitional, you know, in substandard or overcrowded housing, house surfing, sleeping in their car. We're able to bring these people in and give them that welcome home, right? 240 times a year, we say those words to people who are coming from, many of whom, about 60% are coming from homelessness, and we welcome them in. We're very proud of that work, we love that work. And we're very excited at the prospect of doing that work for our veteran populations and doing that work here in Norwood. So with that, I don't want to take up people's time too much, and I'm sure there'll be plenty of questions that might, you know, cover anything I missed. I wanted to invite our partner, Jason, to come on up and introduce himself. Jason is not with Caritas Communities, although in many ways he is with Caritas Communities. But we know that when we're bringing people from a state of homelessness, especially people with complex traumatic pasts, especially in the veteran population, that it's not enough to just provide four walls and a roof and sort of call it a day, that it's really critical that we have supportive services in the mix, that they are a partner in our mission, and that they help people in ways that Jason will explain. I'm not going to get into it, but Jason, thank you.
My name is Jason Gilbert. I'm the chief operations officer at Clear Path for Veterans New England. Clear Path for Veterans New England is a veterans-centric nonprofit providing support services to veterans and families. Part of that is working with our partners, Caritas Communities, in their residential setting, providing case management and support services to those veterans in those units. Some of the supportive services that we provide, we have an SSVF contract, which is Supportive Services for Veterans Families. That is a contract to help with rental assistance, utility assistance, transportation. A lot of the supportive services needed to stabilize a veteran or family into a unit and stabilize their, while stabilizing their income to create that housing stability. Clear Path for Veterans not only provides supportive services, but they also have a wellness aspect, which we have many programs to help with veterans in their, either in their downtime, or they, you know, they're utilizing this to get themselves in a better situation mentally, physically, financially. So we have built programs, or we have built our programs out to help with the stability of the housing aspect of the veteran through our state contracts, through our federal contracts. We have an employment program through HVRP that we had up until 2023. We converted that into case management positions under our SSVF contracts. So we're able to provide wraparound services to veterans in all aspects, housing, in the community. We provide street outreach to those veterans that are in tents, and we guide them through the process of meeting with their VSO, meeting VA partners if they need medical enrollment in the VA healthcare system. We're just there to provide that wraparound support for all those veterans that are in need. Thank you.
All right, I'm back. So like I said, my name's Greg Richen. I'm the head of real estate and CFO here at Caritas Communities. We were here back in January, and I'm really excited to have so many of you here tonight. Just a quick overview of what the project is, and I'm sure we're all familiar with. 20 Vernon Street is currently an office building. We're proposing to turn it into 20 studio units for extremely low-income veterans. We all know it's very transit-oriented. It's oriented right in Norwood Center. Tenant rent will be subsidized by VASH vouchers, which means if you make $0, your rent is $0. You always pay 30% of your income on your rent. And that's why the vouchers are so essential, not just to Caritas being able to sustain the building economically, but also so that residents aren't rent burdened, were they to lose their job or something of that nature. And obviously, we have proposed a deep level of supportive services with Jason and Clear Path, and they actually already provide services at our Bedford Veterans Quarters facility up in Bedford, which is right on the VA campus. And we have a longstanding partnership there that we're really proud of. And then, since we were here last, there have been a few changes, but before I talk about all those recent new developments, I just want to say, reiterate what Frank mentioned, which is, this will be our 30th affordable housing project. So we have done this before, and while each deal is unique, they all have certain similarities. One of those similarities is me standing here before you tonight and proposing the project at the local level and then also at the state level in order to get the funding we need to make this project come to fruition. You know, taking a step back, one of the changes since last time we were here is the state actually announced more funding for veterans' housing. And because of that, we were comfortable, after some conversations with the people in charge, effectively lowering our ask 20% from about $50,000 per unit to $40,000 per buildable unit for veterans at this facility. The other thing that's happened in the interim period is we've had lengthy conversations and listened to feedback from the town. So we have a list of FAQs that are here tonight that I hope you all get a chance to look at. We've been working with Norwood Housing For All as well, and they've been a great sort of proponent, giving us not just support, but also voicing the concerns of the community about this particular project. You know, so we've been working on the FAQs, we've been working with the working group of the town answering these questions. We listen to the fact that a local preference is very important to the citizens of Norwood, and we spoke with our contacts at the VA and found out we could actually do that, and we could institute a local preference. And then the other big change, obviously, is our planning and zoning board approvals. We went ahead and received both approvals over the course of the past month. So we have our entitlements in place, which means we've gotten to the next leg of the race, so to speak. There have been an interesting, interestingly untiming, just two weeks ago, HUD released a change in the VASH voucher requirements. And historically, you had to be at 50% variable median income to initially qualify for these vouchers. They increased that initial qualification AMI to 80%. So it's a more middle-income affordable housing option in order to not exclude folks who might be on disability income, but who might still need the intense level of supportive services with housing that we're proposing to offer. All that being said, chronically homeless, disabled veterans are always the top priority of the VASH voucher program, and that's who we're here to house first and foremost. So I just want to walk us through where we were, where we are, and where we're going. We obviously submitted, back in October of last year, our preapproval for the CPA. We signed a purchase and sale with the owners of the property over at 20 Vernon Street last December. We received our CPC recommendation back in January. In May, we received further comments from town leadership. We decided not to go to the town meeting because of so many changes happening and so many questions from the town that we wanted to answer more thoroughly. One of those questions was, for example, getting an appraisal, and that appraisal's in process, and the town is working on that. Usually, you know, we want to be as, we want to listen, we want to actively listen to any concerns that the town might have, because we truly believe that we share the same goals here as the town of Norwood in providing housing for homeless veterans. And then in July, we submitted our CPC application. Back on August 12th, we received planning board approval to put the 20 units in the building at 20 Vernon Street. And here we are tonight at the public hearing. And the next course of action will be to apply to the fall funding round at the state, which will fund the vast majority of this project. That application is due in October. And the good news is, we had really positive preview meetings with state officials encouraging us to move forward with this meeting tonight and to move forward with our state funding application. And then ultimately, we will plan to close on the acquisition of the property in January of next year and work through the funding process. It's a lengthy process. Affordable housing doesn't happen quickly. Real estate development doesn't happen quickly, but add in the layers of regulatory funding timelines, and it takes some time to get these things going. But ultimately, we're really, we're really excited, and we think construction can start as early as next year if we get all our ducks in a row, as we're aiming to do. And yeah, that's kind of the timeline. I don't want to, I don't want to talk too much. I think there's going to be plenty of opportunities for questions from the committee and the working group, who it's been a pleasure to receive feedback from so far, as well as the public. But the last thing, I just want to summarize in conclusion is, this is what we do. We have about 900 units. This would be 20 more housing the most vulnerable populations. Clear Path is an excellent partner, that goes without saying. And we really think that this is a communal benefit, and that the Community Preservation Committee was founded upon the idea that one of the four buckets of uses of funds is community housing. And we think this really fits the bill for exactly that purpose. And that's why we came here, because we knew you wanted to do this project, and we wanted to step up and show you what we thought we could do. So I'll leave it at that.
Great. Thanks, Greg. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nice presentation. So next, I want to turn it over to the CPC for questions. And so I just want to declare to everybody in the audience that Caritas submitted a revised CPC application to the committee, and that we've had a chance to review that, and we've met with the Caritas group and have asked some questions and clarifying questions. But having said that, is, you know, I want to open it up to you all to see if there are any additional questions, comments. Cheryl?
I just have one question for you guys. Is there a reason why you don't go to a bank and get a loan for some funding?
Absolutely reasonable question. Thank you. We do go to the bank, and we do get a loan, but you can only get a loan on the portion of debt that you can cover with cash flow. And so you're not going to get a loan for the entire amount of the acquisition plus the construction that's needed. A property like this could probably support a loan of approximately $1.5 million. And so we will take on as much debt as we possibly can in order to fund the project, but the other sources of funding are the gap funding sources, generally grants and soft money from the locality in the state, such is the reason we're here tonight.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Okay. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Joe Greeley, who is going to speak on behalf of the working group that has done some homework since the last application. So, Joe?
Thank you. So in addition to the effort to the Community Preservation Committee and as far as, like, fielding and responding to town meeting members and comments from the public, in parallel to that effort, we thought it was necessary to bring together a group of folks, all of whom who would be involved. This is, this has morphed from the typical community preservation application to now it's got so many moving parts. There's input required from the town manager, town council, the finance commission, planning, community development. So it's truly expanded beyond what we, what the town has seen, what the community has seen as far as the typical CPA project application over the last six or seven years. So the working group is not intended to replace the CPC efforts, but it's to augment and supplement that work, but also to try to get ahead of, rather than, like, serially, you know, serially waiting for the CPC to finish their work and then starting the expanded work, we're working in parallel. So we met once, formally we met once, but we've had a number of communications back and forth. The working group consists of the town manager, a member of the finance commission, Sarah Sullivan, I'll ask Sarah to jump in after this, a member of the CPC, that's me, Community Preservation, a member from the community development planning. Sarah Dixon has joined us at that table as well. We've also got Kristen Phelps, who's given us great support throughout, and Matt Lane, representing the board of selectmen. So that working group, and we will, just as the CPC will call in others as needed, you know, we'll get in touch with that gentleman on the screen behind Greg, you know, Ted Mulvihill, for his retirement seat input. We may or may not reach out to members, formally reach out to members of the VA and other, obviously, interested parties in this. But again, the working, that's the whole intent of the working group, is to work in parallel. The, I think everybody probably has received a copy of the frequently asked questions. So the frequently asked questions, it's got a big stamp on it that says draft. And this is truly, we're looking at this as a living document. Right now, there's whatever, seven or eight pages or so, but we do anticipate between now, certainly from the input tonight, and from any feedback or additional items that we pick up educationally, we pick up, that'll definitely be of interest to town meeting members. So we're looking at this over the next roughly six weeks to make this the document that people can refer to before we go to town meeting for vote. This is really the, if you will, the body of work. So this is kind of the body of work that we've consolidated between CPC Working Group and various groups that had input prior to this. So certainly, as everybody, both here tonight and anyone at home, this will be made, I think, made available online, if it is not already. Not already. But we will, after tonight, we'll try to consolidate comments and questions, and that next edition will be publicized and made, obviously called, you know, make it a public document, but an accessible document as well, along with other items. Caritas has been great as far as providing not only questions, like for the outline, further outlining Clear Path, et cetera, but they've been great as far as providing financial statements in the IRS 990, the IRS 990 is another important financial document. So as we proceed along here, we'll be accumulating the combined CPC Working Group, we'll be consolidating all of our documents and providing one consolidated package to town meeting in October. I'm sure I forgot something, but Sarah, any other comments?
I think just to, I look at the goal of the working group as getting the information so that town meeting, who is ultimately the deciding best force, has the information they need. I think that's what we're, as members of all of these committees. I think CPC has done their homework, and the working group is doing theirs now, but it's really about making sure we have all the information so that when you get to town meeting floor, people feel like they're involved. And I mean, to make it as easy as possible, this is a big investment, first, really big investment for the community preservation, the largest size. They've been doing a lot of investment, but I would say it's the largest project that they've invested in since we've adopted this. So I think it's important we have the information.
And obviously, if anybody has any questions relative to the working group as opposed to the Community Preservation Committee, you know, that's why we're all here, is to answer any questions. You know, take note, as Catherine said, we might not have the answers immediately, but you're helping us kind of steer the course between now and town meeting. So ultimately, as Sarah said, ultimately, the town meeting members have the vote on yea or nay. But this is really kind of fact-finding, it's a public hearing, and that's the way we're looking at it.
So does Sarah Dixon have anything to add to, I mean, as a member of that group?
No, I think your comments, Joan, Sarah, have been really comprehensive, but the applicants have been very responsive over the last few months and kind of providing lots of detail. And like Sarah said, we're really just trying to make sure that everybody can hold the information and their questions answered before they vote on this in October itself. Thanks to everybody for their participation.
Sarah, do you have anything to add?
Well...
I was just going to add very quickly, if anyone...
Oh, sorry.
I was just going to add very quickly, if anyone, oh, sorry, who, sorry. If anyone's here that's not familiar with, with what the CPC does and what this working group did, we're just trying to get as much information to you, the public, as possible. Where that document is not made to convince you that the project should be supported or dissuade you. It's just to give you information. And as Joe said, it's a living document. So if there are things that come up tonight that we, that aren't in the document, that's a good thing. If there are things that come up between now and sometime before town meeting, that would be helpful. You know, we just want to do the best job that we can to prevent, present information. It's not, we're not here to persuade you to, to vote for this or vote it down right now. That, we're just information. But you did a great job, Joe.
Can I just follow up? On this draft, there aren't as many, I've, I've asked a lot of financial questions. I'm the she in the emails, but asking questions on behalf of the entire finance commission. But I'm hoping that that, some of the answers to those questions will make it into this moving forward because I have, I sent a couple of follow-ups and I have a couple more in my head. So I don't know if that was tonight or for a different. Can I go?
I would, I would say, yeah.
Do we have any?
Yeah.
Do we have any questions? Yeah. Oh, her, your follow-up questions?
Can I ask some follow-up questions or is that?
Sure.
Okay. So first of all, thank you for being here. The work you do is amazing. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that. As a member of the finance commission, it's my responsibility to ask some of these questions where I feel it's my responsibility. So I love the idea that you've never sold a property. What I struggle with based on some of the information I received as a member of the working group is that in other communities, you, you have soft debt or you have something like that. In the spring and over the summer, we have asked about a clawback or something. I know you've never sold a property, but by your own admission here tonight, you've grown quite a bit. When I look at your 990, all I had was 22. There was a decrease in contributions. Your net assets decreased more. And I understand you're taking on more debt because you're doing more work. I understand all of that, but a decrease in contributions makes me nervous. There's a lot of great nonprofits out there doing great work. So this is why I'm asking that question because I hope you never have sold a property. Sell a property, but we all know things can change. So in some of the answers, it said that it's obviously more complicated if we do soft debt. But this is probably a question for you as well as our town council. Can we consider a clawback or something in the agreement so that for an extended period of time, so that, I understand that CPC, it's CPC's right to grant the money, but I just think as a, it would just make a lot, from a financial perspective, some protection so that it doesn't get sold in five years and weep. And I know you don't anticipate doing that. It's just I would like people to consider that. I haven't seen a new agreement.
You shouldn't ever rely on a buyer saying we're not going to sell the property.
Correct.
That should not be what you rely on. You should be legally protected. And if that means a clawback agreement, absolutely. If that means a security interest in the property via soft debt instrument, 100%. Many of our properties have soft debt. Some of our properties have grants that had clawback agreements, right? So the way it's generally structured, and I was talking to people about this earlier today, is, you know, there's a deed restriction to restrict the property for a certain number of years or in perpetuity to affordable housing at a certain percentage of annual income. And if, as an operator, we don't stick to that, you have recourse. You can say, hey, you're not doing what you said you would do. And that's absolutely, you're right. And that's what the state does with their documents and that's what the localities do with their documents. So being protected is something we want you to be. We're partners in this. If Caritas were to say, you know what, we don't want to be in a certain town or we're going to go in a different direction and we were to, in let's say 20 years or 30 years for some unknown reason, transfer the property, first of all, it would just be a transfer and it would be a transfer to another nonprofit, like a neighbor works or someone like that because we are beholden to our fortibility covenants. Because of the funding we're getting, we cannot make a profit, not to mention we are a nonprofit, so we cannot make a profit. But more importantly, it's a, it's a deed restricted property. It's a mission oriented property that's, that's reported at the registry deed. So when, when that happens, there's, there's nothing more you can do. If we were to say, you know, this property, for whatever reason, it's not for us anymore long after hung gone, so I would never prove that. It'll just, it would be operated by another reputable nonprofit. That's literally worst case scenario what I see. So whether it's a clawback or a, or a security instrument, we are happy to entertain both and would actually expect either or.
I think that's going to be really important to include in the FAQs. Yep. Is there anything else? I'm sure you have a few.
Sorry, I'm.
No, no, no.
You know what? You can go on because I think that answers.
You can come back too if you want.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions from the CPC members, working group? Okay, great. All right. We're going to start with the remote folks. Ted, do you want to go ahead, please? If you could just introduce yourself and talk about your former employment, that would be helpful.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
You can.
Okay, outstanding. Thank you. Members of the committee and working group, elected and appointed officials and concerned bodies, my name is Teddy Mulvahill. Until eight business days ago, I had the great honor of serving as the Director of Veteran Services and Veteran Service Officer for the town of Norwood for the past 24 years. I'm going to be very brief in my presentation tonight. I'm going to bring something different to the table. There are certain aspects relative to this project that I know nothing about and I would not presume to tell you facts or something that was totally, totally out of my league. So what I'm going to do tonight is talk about the human aspect of what we're talking about here. Over the course of my many, many years, I've had a great relationship with the public safety officers of police and fire in town. They have come to me on numerous occasions over the years with St. Teddy. We've got a young man out here, he's taking him in his car and we think he's a veteran, you know, can you come and have a look? And so we'll go and we'll find out and we'll make our inquiries and verify veteran status. And once that status has been verified, then certain actions can be taken. Back in the day when it was a simpler time, I'd just throw him in the back of my car and we'd drive to New England Shelter for Homeless Veterans on Court Street in Boston. I'd walk in with the veteran, I'd, you know, provide proof of his veteran status and wish him well and come home. And he had a place to stay. He had three meals a day, a warm bed and a roof over his head. Now, as time has gone by, it's not quite as simple anymore. There's liability aspects involved, stuff that, that can, can put a handcuff on us in terms of our efficiency in dealing with homeless veterans in Norwood. But we still managed to get the job done and, and it doesn't happen often, but it does happen. So I do want to back up and make, make it very, very clear that in my first appearance for the CPC, I made a statement that I was, I wasn't really, I didn't understand the depth of the position that I was proposing and I didn't understand the scope of the project. And I said there are no homeless veterans in Norwood. I did say that. Now that I have, now the time has gone by, I should have clarified that statement. There are no homeless veterans in Norwood living on the street. That is the absolute truth. And again, my purpose here tonight is present to you facts so you can make your own informed decisions based on the facts that I present to you this evening. Are there homeless veterans in Norwood? Yes, there are. Okay. In the past, recent past, we've had a 70-year, 77-year-old veteran and his son who have come to Norwood because they were, they were treated well by public safety and police and officials and they were given, you know, a shelter and a meal and stuff like that. It's not surprising that homeless and disabled folks do come to Norwood because we are a caring community and we do have a wonderfully efficient and compassionate public safety division in our town that does care about people and, and, and shows that every single day. Again, I got a call from a 65-year-old veteran who's living in the butchers behind a big Y when that was under construction. We took care of him. It's just that the aspect of homeless veterans in Norwood is one that we have always have maintained and a, and a highest area of, of attention. And, and so what we've done is we've developed over the course of these years, a good program to deal with homeless veterans as they present themselves to us. Now, let's go back to the statement I just made. Are there homeless veterans in Norwood? Yes, there are. Now, where are they? Okay, it's not mass and cats, not in my town, not in your town. They're not lining the streets, they're not sleeping in doorways, they're not in pup tents up on Town Carmen or Chapel Street Park, but they are here. Where are they? Well, they're on, they're unseen. They're at, I've got the Vietnam veteran, for example, I'll give you a couple of them. The Vietnam veteran living in his, came up from Florida, homeless down there and came up to stay with his mom and live on the couch because he was just, at that point financially where he couldn't afford shelter. It's a Coast Guard veteran living on the mattress and the floor of his landlord's business while his truck's parked outside. It was a US Army veteran who slept, went for an entire winter in the backseat of her Mercedes. It was an old, old car. Under plastic bags, holding all of her belongings and the Mercedes had no back windshield. It was duct taped shut. Refused to come in out of the fold. And that's the other aspect that we have to take into consideration too. Often times when they present to me, they're unwilling to accept the assistance that we offer to them. But we've got the Afghani, Afghani veterans, you know, sleep on his sister's couch and the female Navy veteran living with a cousin. So are there homeless veterans out there? Yes, they are. What's the difference between those homeless veterans and the ones that are on the street? Unfortunately, they have a roof over their head. Thanks to, thanks to the compassion of friends and family, they have a roof over their head. But the difference in, difference I want to stress to you about the homeless veterans in Norwood is they work. They are working citizens, taxpayers. They simply don't have a place to live of their home. They get up and they take the bus to work every day or they walk to work today or they bicycle to work every day and they go and do their job and they come home. And that's their living arrangement that they're forced to, to live with, you know, authorize the jobs that they're, that they're working at or not. Well, was it conducive to saving up money for first, last, once rented and security deposit? It's just, it's just not a viable option for them at this time economically. But are they out there? Yes, they are. Yes, they are because I know, I know they are. And again, that's why I'm here tonight to provide factual information to the, to the folks concerned that they're out there. So is there a need for a homeless veterans development in Norwood? Yes, absolutely. Are there a lot of homeless veterans in Norwood that we would take advantage of the situation in living conditions that the homeless veterans housing? Not a lot. Would some of them be eligible? Absolutely. No question about it. Would some of them be welcoming to that change in their living condition to get off the couch and go be self-sufficient on their own and have a place to stay? Absolutely. Absolutely, absolutely is true. And again, I go back to the, the statement I made relative to the, to the goodwill of our community. Would there be residents coming into the community from, from other cities and towns and states? Yes, of course there will. Norfolk County is a very large county and we have a couple of very large cities in Norfolk County and there are homeless veterans who do in fact live on the street in those bigger cities in our county and across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The homeless veterans on the street, they're out there? Absolutely. Working veterans who have no place to stay and no home in Norwood? Yes. So there is a need and that need could be met by a project such as the one that is being presented to you tonight. I don't pretend to be an expert on the financial aspects, the building management aspect of it, but I am an expert in finding those who need help. I have an expert in dealing with those who needs help, who need help. And I can also work with an organization like this to provide input as to the veracity and quality of applicants that they have. I can verify veteran status. That's something that I do on a daily basis, but pretty much verifying veteran status is very important. We want to make sure that housing is being offered, provided to veterans who are qualified for the program. And that's our right to come in and our office and our department to come in and, and be of value to a project such as this. So I apologize for rambling on, but in closing, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that there is a need out there. And is it going to be, is it 20, is it going to be 20 Norwood residents? No, of course not. Of course not. But let's not, you know, let's not close our minds to the fact that there's a need out there for our neighbors as well. Just because a guy lives in Norwood, does that make him automatically eligible? No. Sure, there'll be a vetting process and eligibility will be determined. But what about the guy that lives in the next town over and is homeless? Does he need shelter? Yes, he does. And are we able to provide that shelter? Should we morally? I say yes. So I'll leave the details and finances and important aspects, is that a part of the project, up to the public matter experts in, in that field. I can only speak to the human aspect of it and, and how I see the project, how it would benefit those who have a need for this project. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Teddy. I really appreciate the supplemental information. It's really helpful. Could I just ask one question? You talked about definitely the need for sort of individual housing for these people who are staying with people. I guess, you know, you're an expert in this and so I guess what I'd ask you to comment on is the wraparound services that will be provided as part of this project and, and, you know, do you think that's going to be of value to these folks that basically aren't getting services currently?
Oh, unquestionably. Let's, let's take for example, the Vietnam veteran who stayed at his mom's house down at the Ellis Neighborhoods. Currently, his only lifeline and, and contact to veterans benefits and services, healthcare and, and financial assistance is through our office. So, I mean, he's limited because he doesn't have a vehicle. He's on the bus line, as a lot of these folks are. So he's not exposed on a daily basis to act, to access benefits and services that he's eligible for. In a situation like this where it's a house full of residents with a living administrator, a supervisor, who is obviously very well versed in the services available, there's access and access on a daily basis. And that's one of the most important things. We need to make sure that our veterans who are in need understand that they are eligible for programs that will meet that need and we need to, need to make sure that they can get that on a regular basis and sometimes in a daily basis so that they know what's out there.
Great. Thank you. We appreciate your comments. It looks like there's another member or another person online. Are they interested in making any comments? I'll take that as a no. All right, so I'm going to turn it over to folks in person. It looks like we have comments from three different people. So I'm apologizing in advance for messing up names, but the first will be Steve Kenechi.
Goodness.
Thanks, Steve. If you could come forward and just introduce yourself, address and where you're from, that would be really great.
I'm from District Four. And I've got a number of questions, but it kind of all boils down to my first question, which is, why would you expect the town of Norwood to gift $800,000 of taxpayer money to Corina's Communities to purchase this property and leave the town of Norwood with nothing in return? Now, Norwood is a warm and caring community, but we're not an affluent community. We should be asked to fund a project like this. How are surrounding communities contributing to this to help us out? Because we've just been told that a lot of the veterans would come from surrounding communities. So I don't know why Norwood would be the community to shoulder the responsibility for this whole thing. this whole thing.
So could I jump in just quickly?
Sure.
And so the CPC was created to give money for certain projects, and this is an eligible project under the rules of the statewide CPC. So with all due respect, I don't think it's a gift. I think it's a dispersment of funds that are in accordance with Commonwealth's requirements with regard to that. Does anybody from the CPC want to add to that?
Well, the definition of a gift is when you give something to somebody without giving something in return.
Understandable, but, you know, arguably, every project that we have approved would be considered a gift, if, in accordance with your definition. So I hear what you're saying, but, you know, I don't think Caritas is in the position to answer that. And just by way of history, you know, when we entertained the first application, it was the consensus of the CPC that we were going to approve this to move forward to town meeting. And, you know, as you all know, town management asked us, or asked Caritas to pull the application so that we could provide more information to the town meeting members and the community to be able to act on this with a lot more information. And so I'm not sure that Caritas is really going to give you a satisfactory answer to this.
Well, just...
Joe, do you want to add anything?
Sorry to cut you off, but what, it might make sense to divide your comment slash question into two. One is, like, why would Norwood fund this project? You know, let's call that question number one. And then question might, question number two might be more geared to Caritas and the group of why Norwood. The answer to the first question, as Catherine just said, is the CP, the Community Preservation Act was adopted in 2016, and so we've basically been managing that. We've, the various iterations of the committee has vetted, fielded, and vetted, and proposed literally dozens of projects over that time. Every one of those projects, and it hasn't been cop blanch, we have turned projects back to the advocate and said, either not this time, or you need to go back and provide further information. And in fact, some of those have come back at a subsequent town meeting. So everything that this committee does, our first question is, for any project proposal, does it comply with the Community Preservation Act requirements and the law? So that's our job. And in this case, this project proposal, you know, it checks all the boxes, it dots the i's and crosses the t's, and where information has been lacking or short, or, you know, we just have further questions, the group especially has been really responsive and has provided information enough so that the committee has voted, the majority of the committee has voted in favor of the project to move it forward. So that's why, to answer your question, it's, you can use, anybody can use any word they want, as long as it's, you know, as long as George Collin approves it, but basically, it has to be, like, they have to, any proponent has to come and propose a project that complies with the law. And they, you know, to every extent, so far, they have done that. The second part of your question, as far as I'm concerned, is why Norwood? And I'm not, I live in Norwood, I think it's a great place, but I'm going to let you think of asking, consider asking that as a second question.
What was my second question? And I asked it. Norwood is not an affluent community. We're a warm and caring community. But why would Norwood shoulder this? Why not Westwood? Why not Walpole? Why not Sharon? I mean, there's a lot of surrounding communities that should either consider taking this on themselves or help us shoulder the burden. Has anybody gone out to any surrounding communities and asked them to help us out?
Caritas.
So, let's... We own properties throughout eastern Massachusetts. This isn't the only town. We don't own any properties in Norwood, but we develop properties from Salem down to New Bedford, up to Bedford, all around where it's Boston. So we are not picking on Norwood. We have seen that Norwood has a desire to build community housing as determined by their Community Preservation Act fund, which they created and the town voted to create. And therefore, we thought it would be good, throw our hat in the ring and say, hey, this is something we decided would be good for your community, and it aligns well with our mission, and we would be happy to show you what we do.
Great, thanks. I think Debbie has something to add?
I think, I understand you think we're giving them something, but it's nonprofit. Why not Westwood or the other communities? I don't think they have the stock that we have in order to make this possible. I also think that any veteran, I don't care what state they're from, is ours.
We have the property. I know what you're saying there, that they don't have the stock of property to do this, but they certainly have residents in their community who might take advantage of it, just like residents in Norwood or Sharon or any other surrounding towns, so...
But maybe we're more warm and caring.
Caritas, like you said.
Why would we fund it alone? Why wouldn't we ask them if they would like to share in helping us through this project?
I don't have an answer to that. Maybe that gentleman does. However, it is, you know, we can't, somebody always tells me we can't use Westwood as an example. I get why you think we're giving them something, but every project that the CPA has done has been things that, you know, you can have that argument with everything. Why the bells? Why the parks? Why...
Those things we owned. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't give somebody a project or a bundle of money that they could use for something else, and we don't own the property anymore. That's why it's a gift. It's not a...
I get, I get that concept, but our veterans are gifts.
Cheryl, do you want to add something?
We've given money to another project that we don't own. The Day House. We're restoring their fireplace. We don't own the Day House.
Who owns the Day House?
The historical preservation.
Yep. They own it, but we're giving money to them to help them out. Nowhere in the CPC does it say we have to own. There is like no ownership.
Yeah, I'd like to go back to, I think, what Joe said, which is what our job is, to determine whether this complies with the CPA, right? And we've made a determination that this project complies with it, like many other Massachusetts towns have sponsored these types of projects. So, and I think, you know, why...
I don't want to belabor this or turn this into an argument or anything.
Yeah, no, no, no.
I've talked to a lot of people in Norwood. I sent letters out to all the town meeting members. You'd be surprised at how many letters I got back from the town meeting members saying that they support my position on this. And you're going to have a very, very difficult time getting town meeting to approve this.
So we appreciate that, and this is why we've gone through the second round, because we were trying to address all these concerns. And so I guess I would ask you to take a look at the frequently asked questions, and if there are any other questions that you feel would be relevant for us to answer, so that town meeting members can make an informed decision. And I'll just go back to what Matt said. You know, we're not trying to convince you to vote for this project or not vote for this project. What the CPC had done originally by majority is to move this forward to town meeting. So ultimately, it's town meeting's decision. And so I appreciate that you're reaching out to your folks, and I guess I'll only say that I hope there's people, advocates for the project that are reaching out to town meeting members.
I haven't received one negative reply back.
Yeah. Okay, fair enough, fair enough. Any other questions?
No, that's it. I'll leave somebody else.
Awesome. Thanks for your input, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Joe Sheehan. Hi, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Joe Sheehan, 269 Prospect Street, and a former member of the CPC recently. Teddy's a tough act to follow because what I had to say, had to say, he's already said most of it. I'll just make it a little quicker, instead of going through everything I wanted to say. As we know, Norwood has a long history of supporting and honoring its veterans, whether it be the parks that we, the veterans' parks, the moral, the memorial hall, we have all these different monuments around town in honoring the vets. And more, more important is the, are the things that we do with Memorial Day and Veterans' Day, when we have veterans who have already served, they've already served their enlistments, but they come back because they're still very proud to serve, and they feel it's necessary to come up and participate in those exercises. And we've always taken care of our veterans, and Teddy has been a great example of that in what he does. But I think tonight, what we want to do is we're looking at a different scenario. This is not just about the remembrance of things past. Remembrance is important, but this proposed project before us is about the present and the future to the benefit of the living, about surviving veterans in need of suitable low-income housing. We are looking at a proposal that would create low-income housing for veterans, a proposal that would move 19 veterans from the Boston region's shelter system into a more stable housing situation in a converted office building, where they would live in their own efficiency apartments. One of the 20 proposed units will be set aside for an onsite manager. There will be some common rooms used for meetings, counseling, educational purposes, et cetera. We are being asked to provide $800,000 in CPA funds for this project, which comes out to less than 12% of the total price of over $7 million. My understanding is that there are about 500-plus veterans in the state shelter system at this time, that's I think I heard from you last time you spoke with us. I hope you'll agree that taking 19 veterans out of the shelter system is a worthy undertaking. Quincy and New Bedford have already done something similar, where Caritas currently operates similar projects. For Norwood, this is a one-and-done situation, where we would make this one payment, and Caritas would be responsible for all the maintenance and upkeep of the building and for running the operation and its programs. When we ask young men and women to join the military, to fight and defend our country, no one really even knows what the end result is going to be. Often, when the young enter into the military, they may enlist with a mix of caution and a youthful sense of invincibility. They may think that there is danger, but don't worry, I'll be okay. In war, there are innumerable ways for one to be wounded or otherwise harmed. None are guaranteed safe passage. They still volunteer to serve, so that many of us do not have to serve. When there is a buildup for war, many place signs on their lawns that say, "We support our troops." But what exactly does that mean? Where is the line drawn showing how far our support for our veterans goes? Will we go as far as is necessary to provide decent, suitable, stable housing for our veterans when they return home? Or is a perpetual trip through the state's shelter system sufficient support for our troops? Is that good enough? I don't believe it is. I ask that you support this project. I believe that it is altogether fitting and proper that we should do this. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. I appreciate it. Next up, Tony Esco. Love to have you come forward.
My name is Tony Esco. I live on Endicott Street in District Five, and I've been a resident for 42 years.
Tony, can you try and speak up just a little bit?
Sure. I cannot think of a more valuable, tangible asset than one's home, and every veteran should have one. I am in complete support of the project proposed use for Vernon Street. Absolutely no problem. I am married to Marine Corps vet who has 500 service hours, medical driving, veterans to their medical appointments. We support veterans in our house. I am in grave disagreement with the amount of money that's being requested. So my comments come from a financial, fiduciary, and stewardship point of view with how the CPA committee should view this request. I have enjoyed doing several hours of research on veterans' housing-related projects that have been funded by CPA funds in other towns. And I could not find one where the town had to foot the bill to actually purchase the whole property. I could not find one. I found many creative projects where the veteran housing proposal also included a betterment to an open space trail, or the conversion of an old historic town hall to veterans' housing that's being worked on somewhere, but I could not find one like this. I would consider a contribution to show that we care, however, to this project, but not even for the $800,000, and this is why. We are only a 1% surcharge CPA town. More than 70% of participating communities in CPA have surcharges higher than 1%. So we need to leverage and carry up for the money we collect, because it's not big. We need to leverage the funds for maximum benefit. I know there's a lot of people who are shocked about the nature of this project, because it's really, it's a large state issue. So we have a financial obligation to take care of. Veterans homelessness has never been a huge, widely-publicized issue in my 42 years living in Norwood. However, I recognize that statewide, that there is a tension to reduce statewide homelessness, and that there's 500 to 600 homeless veterans, according to the state right now. If Norwood would like to contribute to that effort, it certainly may, but not in the amount currently requested, as this is a state and regional project, and we are only a 1% town. My other issue is that the applicant, Caritas or Caritas, however you say it, in their application shows no effort to offset the purchase of the building with any other grants or donations. And I saw several of those in the veteran CPA applications, which I read and think of. Home Depot Foundation is a big one. Many banks have funded. There are many charitable foundations. They have a 501(c)(3). They're going to have a big gala in November, and they have some huge pricey partners at the Western Hotel at the Boston Seaport District. They get donations. Why aren't they putting their money where their mouth is and put a little bit of down payment of their own cash in that building? I certainly want to contribute to it. I would, but not that whole amount. So as I said, I've seen other applicants whose applications were exemplary, and where applicants got grants from Home Depot, from banks, and private donations, or towns rallied around the proposal. But I see none of that effort with this organization, and that disturbs me. You know, charity begins at home, and you could be too good for your no-good. I think our kind, caring community is being taken an antidote. Furthermore, when CPA was passed, and the committee did their first Housing Needs Assessment, and I printed the page, my concern, if you grant this and deplete not just the Affordable Housing Account, but go into the other, what do you call it?
Undesignated.
Undesignated account, that we are going to miss important funding opportunities. Our Housing Needs Assessment that this body printed, albeit several years ago, but still printing today, that we should be used, that we should use CPA funds to extend those deed restrictions that will be coming to expire. Will we have money to do that? It said we should maintain our 40B compliance, I'm sure we will, we get other apartments that are going to be built, that we need to rehabilitate existing units owned by... That we need to rehabilitate existing units owned by Norwood Housing Authority, which just had a fire alone. Many units need some rehab. That we should preserve and support our existing affordable units and establish a first-time homebuyers program. These are goals in your report. On the fifth one, it finally talks about create affordable housing for persons with special needs, which we should. And then it mentions veterans and elderly. It's way down on the goals right now. What are we going to have left for money after you emptied out the Affordable Housing Account and take hundreds and thousands of dollars out of unrestricted funds? Again, I have no problem with showing we care, because we do, and I do. Donate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars if you want, two fifty. And then hit the trail and find a partner. I agree, this is not just a Norwood issue. This is a regional house. This is not just Norwood. I understand what people are saying, and I don't want the project to be killed. I really don't. But I don't think we should be paying that large amount, because we are going to miss our obligation to have money to pay for expired deed restrictions, rehabilitate our housing, preserve our affordable units that we have now. And if you brought my email years ago, we have a house on Valley Road. I won't use the address because I don't want it, you know, whoever lives here. But if we want it with eight hundred thousand, you could change the requirements. It's already for a veteran. I don't know if you read it, if you got it. You could put a second floor on that house. With eight hundred thousand, you could buy another house. If you really want to create housing for some folks, you can do that. And if you gave two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if we contributed something to it, would we get any credit for the houses? That was a question, actually. If we don't purchase the whole darn building all by ourselves, do we get any credit if we donated two fifty? I am very concerned about the fiduciary and stewardship aspect of this, but this is not a "not" in my backyard. I want this project to happen. I'm also disturbed that this organization didn't network with its veteran community here. They don't really need us. They don't need to know us. That's the part that bothers them about, you know, our community preservation funds. I asked my husband, who's so active in the chaplain for the Marine Corps League and the VFW, "Did you know about this?" No, nobody ever told us. It would have been nice to have networked with the VFW post or have been a guest speaker at the Marine Corps League. That would have been kind of wrong and cushy. I don't get those feelings. But nevertheless, I would support a lesser amount, because I'd like to see the project happen. I would like to see a bank or private donation partner. I would like to see partners. There should be partners. You know, the Blue Hills Regional, it doesn't work like the Blue Hills Regional vocational school tuition, right? This is where you wish it could, although I did see CPA partnerships, the Cape Cod and the Islands House one, you should read about it. But Blue Hills Regional, to fund our students from the nine or ten different towns, each town, each town has to approve a certain portion of the budget to fund that. You can't do that with this. We can't take, say, "Gee, Walpole, would you give us a hundred from your CPA? Gee, Westwood, would you give us a hundred from your ...?" You can't do that. It's not right. That's the problem with this request. We should not have to do this, and it doesn't meet our housing goals. I presented. I can show it to you. Way down here, the veterans. What money will we have to pay to extend our deed restrictions, to rehab our partners and our own housing? Charity begins at home, too. Don't forget us. We can do it both. They can get another partner. They're good folks. They're big business. They know how to do this.
Thanks, Toni. I really appreciate it. So I'd like to start off by addressing some of the things. First of all, thank you and your family for your service, and I'm really glad to see that you are supporting the project. And I understand that your issue is the level of funding that CPC has or is entertaining. So I want to start out by saying that the town is not purchasing the property. So we are providing this funding for the project, but the town is not purchasing the property.
No, I understand that.
Okay, but you said that. Okay, so we're not purchasing the property. So I just want to sort of set the record straight. Secondly, you know, I'll want to turn it over to Caritas afterwards, talk about some additional funding that's coming into this project, because it's not only Town of Norwood funding. There's some state funding coming into that, so I'll let them get to that. And the other thing I'd like to talk about is our budget, just sort of high level. So currently, we have about two-point-six million dollars in the budget, and the projected revenue this year is about nine hundred thousand, and the approved projects that went to town meeting earlier is about seven hundred thousand. So before this project, we have a balance of two-point-eight million dollars in the CPC. And I agree with you, there's not a lot of money in the housing category, but there is a lot of money in the unrestricted. So, you know, the committee felt like we had the ability to fund this. It was not a majority, but the majority did feel like we had the ability to fund it and we're not going to deplete the CPA funds so that we could not do other things. The other thing that I'll just say from context is, you know, the CPA allows us to grant fundings in the areas of community housing, open space, and historical resources. And to date, we've, forty-six percent of the funds that we have allocated have been to open space, forty-five percent to historical, and nine percent to housing. And so of the housing projects, there's been three over seven years. Two were related to the housing trust that the planning board belongs to and helps network and plan and do housing plans. And the third project was at, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was a housing site, and we did some siding and some windows. And just by way of information, to date, we haven't received any other project applications related to housing. And so I just want to toss that out there, and then I would love for Caritas to talk a little bit about other funding that comes in, and then we'll go to Josiah.
I just had two corrections.
Okay. Then we'll go to Caritas.
The deed restrictions are all taken care of.
They are, in perpetuity.
Yes, they are.
Yes.
And I believe, Toni, I think you said you were putting the whole bill. We're not putting the whole bill. Eight hundred thousand is half, just to straighten it out.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Caritas?
Sure.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Really quick. So the total development cost for this project is mostly being funded by state funding sources. So about eighty-five percent is coming from the Executive Office of Housing in local communities, primarily the Housing Innovation Fund and the Housing Stabilization Fund. So again, those are state resources that are funding the vast majority of the acquisition and development of this site.
And so approximately twelve percent is coming from the Town of Norwood?
Approximately, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't have it in front of me, but yeah.
Yeah, so we're not funding the lion's share of this project. So I just want to make sure, you want to, okay, we'll take those questions, and then let's go to this gentleman first. Could you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, Steve Brody, District Four. How much money does Caritas receive from the state to take in the veterans, please?
I'm not certain I understand the question.
No, how much money will you be receiving from any source for housing the veterans? I don't know how I can make it.
This is a project. This is a specific project.
Yeah.
For the project.
No, when you house the veterans, what is your income?
Oh, the, so the veterans are housed with VA VASH vouchers from the Regional Boston Housing Authority, and that's structured so that we cover our operating expenses, our supportive services and case management, our replacement reserves, and yeah, the amount is based on fair market rents determined by HUD every year.
So it's safe to say that the CPC fundings are going toward the capital investment of the project? And then you are responsible for the operating costs?
Right.
So Norwood does not have any obligations with regard to the operating costs absent our donation to or gift to the capital cost? So it's one-time?
It's a one-time investment.
Oh, sorry, Sarah, you want to correct that? Thank God, finance person is. Jump in.
I am sorry. There is, with some of the services that they receive, they are getting a lot of services from ClearCap, but there are some, my understanding is there will be an impact to our operating budget related to some of the state services that are reimbursed at seventy-five percent, not a hundred percent. So the first year, we'll be paying off the full hundred percent because it comes a year later. So there is an impact to our operating budget. It's hard to quantify how much that is, because we're looking for that number. We're trying to get an estimate of that number. There's also, even though they're a nonprofit, I will also state that they will be paying property tax. My understanding is they're paying property tax on this property. So there's revenue, additional revenue possibly coming in, but
By expense.
But there is also going to be expense on our operating.
So that's super important. I think we need to address that in the FAQs.
We need that number. I've been asking for that number, and that's something we've got to work with Town Hall.
Yeah.
It's a little bit, it's not easy to get, but I think we can get a fair estimate, and maybe we can get something from some of the other communities on what.
You mean check them off the team, then?
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, great, great. So we should work on that.
Seven-five percent.
Correct.
Good.
Well, the state pays back seventy-five percent. Town pays twenty-five percent. But if some of those veterans are on social security and other things, they don't have, they don't get one fifteen, so.
That's why it's hard to quantify, but there is going to be some, so that's a number we need.
Okay, great.
I'm making some notes, too.
Yeah, good, 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 okay. Steve?
Yes, Steve Esco, District Five. I had a couple of questions. One, I want to get clear. If a veteran from Norwood, if we say we had three homeless veterans in Norwood, what would be the process if that veteran wanted to obtain housing at Vernon Street?
Sure, yeah, so they would get on the Boston Housing Authority waitlist for this specific property, and because there's a preference for Norwood residents, they would rise to the top of the list.
So they would be given preference. That's good. The other question I had was, the appraisal on this property is due, I mean, wasn't this request put in a month, a couple of months ago for the appraisal?
The town is Yeah, so let me feel that. So we engaged with an appraisal firm, and early last week, they informed us that they weren't able to complete the obligation. So Kristin is engaged with another firm, and the appraisal will come in before the town meeting, and so, you know, we will
And hopefully, those, the dollar amounts are going to come out regarding the appraisal and how much the state's going to be giving for this project, and then they'll know exactly what Norwood will be discussing, but actually, I know eight hundred's on the table right now, as to where that eight hundred fits in with the appraisal.
So Kristin, help me. I think what we're determining, what the fair market value of the property is, and that we are not giving more than the fair market value. So the deal cannot go through if it's in excess of the fair market value. So it would go away. So there is some assurances, but we have every expectation that that will happen within the next few weeks.
So one other, I just want to make this comment, that I read a lot of veteran stuff, veteran administration information that comes out. I know a couple of weeks ago, Veteran Administration announced that they were giving eight hundred million dollars to veteran housing. So I just, I know they just passed that, and I wasn't sure if you guys were going to be able to tap into that somehow. I know since it's just team housing, the process is going to be, how long will it take?
Yeah.
What the time?
Yeah, so that eight hundred million, that's for supportive services for veterans' family renewals or new contracts under the VA for supportive services? Yeah, so it does provide the housing stability. That's what we will utilize to help support this project.
Is this a follow-up, because we have a question? I got you over there. Is this a follow-up to what we're
Just one quick follow-up.
Sure.
There is a purchase and sales agreement, right, that has been extended to February for one-point-six million dollars for that property? I just want to make sure people are aware of that.
Got it. Thank you. Yes, sir. Introduce yourself.
Yeah, how you doing? Alan Slater from Finance Commission. Got a couple of questions if I could. First question deals with the preference for Norwood veterans when a representative of Caritas appeared before the Norwood Selectment earlier this year prior to the town meeting and questions asked, and the response was highly doubtful, given state requirements and state regulations, that Norwood veterans would get preference. I'm wondering, what's changed?
Great question. Caritas? But I could provide a little context that we just don't see it a lot, that the local preferences certainly aren't extended to a hundred percent of the building or lab. We've been doing this for a long time, and thirty properties throughout the greater Boston area, and I can think of one instance where we have seventy percent preference, and that's on locality. And, you know, so I think we came saying that we didn't want to promise something we could deliver, and that's the explanation for the doubtful, based on experience, but then, correct, and subsequent conversations that Brock Good makes. Yeah, spoke with the VA representative, and she did her due diligence and let me know that it is a viable option for this project.
But the VA doesn't make the decision, right? It's the Boston Housing Authority that makes the decision on placement?
The VA controls the vouchers.
The vouchers, but the actual, and I just want to make sure, because that was what was, even though this didn't go before the town meeting, that was what was in the materials that went to town meeting, and it was the Boston Housing Authority makes the decision on placement. So the VA can say that, but is the Boston Housing Authority saying that they will give preference to Norwood? But if we don't know, that's okay. But that's a question if
The VA provides, the VA does provide the waitlist to the Boston Housing Authority. So it is
But I agree, we should run that down and be very clear in the FAQs about that, because it is, I think you point out a good question. It is a switch in what was presented originally.
Right, and it's to the benefit of all the questions that are being asked here tonight. It's the answer you wanted.
Just, let's make sure that when we do go back to town meeting, we have an answer that we can all live with and we fit comfortably, because again, what I heard at the previous discussion before the Selectment, it was pretty clear to me that the opinion of the Caritas representative was that that's not going to happen.
That was me.
And if it's changed, great.
That was me.
But you need some assurances. I get it, yeah.
First of all, that was me.
We need to address that.
And secondly, I didn't want to promise something that I hadn't done my due diligence on, and now I've done my due diligence, and I'm answering your question the way you want it to be answered.
Okay. The other one, well, we'll see, we'll see what we can come up with. One of the other questions I have is that, you know, we received materials in a lot of the other Caritas projects, you know, what the funding sources were. There are a number of projects where CPC contribution was not an outright grant, but it was a loan. And it was usually a loan that in many cases would be added, not just an interest loan, but it would be at a rate of maybe two percent, three percent, and wouldn't be paid until maturity back to the community. And we asked that question, and the response that we get back was that, well, this was discussed with Town Council back in May, but quote, "It's complicated," unquote. So I'm wondering, what's complicated? It's been done. It should be pretty straightforward. Either you do it or you don't.
So before Caritas answers that, I feel like we need to answer that. So since I've been on CPC, I don't recall doing a loan. Is there anybody else here that recalls that?
Since inception, no, CPC is not, we have not voted in favor of the committee borrowing. It's not so much the committee giving a loan. That has never happened either. But the town hasn't borrowed money to fund a project, though, right? So neither of those two things is happening.
I get that. You haven't done it. Town of Norwood hasn't done it. But it seems as if other communities have done it, and I was wondering, you know, they've done it, why we're not doing this in Norwood, because it's something which we're capable of doing, and then why a loan is so complicated?
Got it. Your turn.
So first of all, I just want to clarify that I never said that. So first of all, I just want to clarify that I never said that. I never said it was really complicated. I also want to just ask your name because.
Sarah.
Sarah, we were literally just discussing this maybe forty-five minutes ago when you asked if there was a way for the town to get a security interest in the property, which is exactly the cash flow contingent note, do it maturity, Sarah, that you just referenced. And so I said absolutely, we would be more than willing to do that if you recall that conversation. So whether that's a grant with a clawback or a note that's part of a mortgage security agreement, these are all things we're open to and in fact are more than willing to, to discuss. It's ultimately up to the town of Norwood and the CPC to make those determinations in their interest.
A far line, as you would be minimal to a loan, terms to be determined.
Of course.
As opposed to an outright, outright grant.
Without a doubt.
Yeah, and I, I think we should probably have a follow-up offline conversation with the FinCom and Caritas about, you know, so I, I don't want to put them on the spot, saying a loan is acceptable, but there might be some other things. So.
Right, that's okay. Just that the concept, you know.
Yeah, we should be open to it.
It's been determined that the concept is, is.
It's very common.
Yeah.
The, the last question I have, I think it deals with the construction price. You know, we had a price back in May. Less than three months later, the price has gone up one and a half million dollars, over thirty percent. And if I'm an engineer, I've been in construction, cost increase, I get it. Thirty percent increase in less than three months is a lot of money. And I'm just wondering, you know, what, what, you know, from your perspective, you know, why you changed the number so much? And what, what really has happened in the industry that will cause such a major increase in such a short period of time? It just, from my experience, I've seen increases, but not that increase in that, that amount of time.
Sure, yeah. Well, as you, as I'm sure you know, given your professional background, development's a very iterative process. So we didn't, you know, get behind the walls or get into the ceilings or do a lot of due diligence on the site before we even got through the planning and zoning approvals that we needed or even had this meeting. So there's a, a number of steps you need to take. For instance, tying up the site and getting site control and reaching a determination on the value of the acquisition before you can get a really, really solid hard cost estimate. So we, we use prior projects based on comparable price per, cost per square foot. And after further due diligence, based on our schematic design set with our, with our general contractor and with our structural engineer and with our entire team, we determined that when we go to the state, specifically, we need to be more conservative because there's just too many unknowns there. We weren't comparing necessarily apples to apples when we initially made the determination of, of the, the total hard costs.
Okay, but if, you know, if you go to the state and say, "We need X," you know, based on, you feel your due diligence, whatever that number is. And then, you know, you get in there later and say, "Uh-oh, we didn't expect this." We need more money from the state when the project is already on the construction. You know, what's the state's position in a case like that?
Um, the, the state historically makes sure these projects get done, but there's always contingencies worked in to the hard costs and soft costs, especially on an adaptive reuse like this.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Great question. Sarah, did you have any answers?
I just think, you know, besides CPC and FinCom, I think we would need probably Town Council and the town. I'm sure they'll lay in on that conversation at some point.
About what's amenable to the town? Yeah, fair enough. Okay.
Because I think they're the ones who were involved in the initial conversation.
Okay, good. All right, we'll mark that down. Okay.
Catherine, you're on.
Yeah, I know. Yes, Sarah, I, I got you.
Hi guys. Jeff Sullivan from the Norwood Record. I just have two questions. One for the chair. Where does CPA money come from?
Registry of deeds.
Registry of deeds, a percentage on the sale. Hit it, Joe.
The, the majority of the funds come from the one, someone mentioned.
One percent, Tony.
The one percent is raised locally as a tax. It's one percent of the tax, of the real estate tax that real, that property owners pay. So it's not, it's not one percent of the value of the home. It's one percent of the tax that they pay. That's the, that's, that's the majority of the money. But then in addition, the state further contributes to all participating CPA communities. And those, sorry, and those funds come from the registry of deeds, the local county register of deeds, VCs. So there's a, there's a certain amount of collections that are handled or that come into the reg, the local registry of deeds. And then those funds are then pooled and distributed to all the CPA participating towns.
So the communities of Norfolk County have contributed to Norwood's CPA fund?
Yes. Likewise, right. So in that case, it's like a, it, it's regional in both directions, right? At that, another way to say a question maybe, is that not only have, have residents of Norwood contributed through the register of deeds process. So we've, we've paid money into that pool and then that pool has been divided across the whole county, all of the CPA participating communities. But then in, and to your question, in this case, we also, not only do we give to other communities, but other communities are giving to us. Right? And it all, you know, every community that, if you got in early to the C, if you adopted, if you're an early adopter of the CPA law, it was implemented in, it was written in two thousand, the year two thousand. So the communities that entered in and adopted CPA back in the early two thousands, they're getting more of that match from the state. As, you know, the, so it's early in, early in gets.
More money.
More money.
Yeah.
And if you're just jumping into the pool now, you're, you're, you know, not only is that the same amount of money being spread across a new community and more communities, but they get less of a match than the early adopters.
And my second question to the chair is for Caritas, I believe. But I've read around that it costs about forty-five to fifty thousand dollars a year in state services for a homeless person? Is that, does that sound correct or am I off base there?
Last, last figure I heard was in the low thirties, but that could be dated.
Yeah, I, I don't know if this was regional or.
You mean someone who's currently homeless?
Yes.
Yeah, that's services, ER utilization, shelter, all, all, yeah.
So I guess my question is, is there a net economic benefit to housing one of those persons? Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the only people that checked off that they would like to speak. Is there anybody else that has any questions or comments? Oh, okay. Debbie?
If you're paying one-sixth of the property and you're getting eight hundred from us, who's paying the difference? What funding source is paying the difference? I've, they probably heard this, but I.
No, 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 that's, that's.
New member.
Yeah, sorry.
No, apologize.
So it's a, first of all, it really depends when we would receive the CPC money. So if we received the CPC money in January when we closed, we would have eight hundred from the CPC and the other eight hundred from an acquisition loan, just like a mortgage you would take out from a bank. If we didn't get that money until later on, then we would close with the full one point six million borrowed from the bank.
And the bank's giving you a one point six with no, remember you said you got a base in on your rents, but that's why you couldn't get a bank loan?
It's a short, it's a short-term loan. They know it will be taken out by.
Are they bridging it or something against your other properties? Is that what they're doing or?
Uh, it would be collateralized by a property.
So to Tony's point, are there any other sources that you tapped into? The other, to Tony's point, is there any other place to get some of the funding?
Definitely the state is the big one, right? That's over eighty-five percent of our total sources.
Yeah, I wasn't talking, I'm talking about the acquisition or the eight hundred thousand. Was there one of the other companies that the, you know, the other veterans have gone to? Have you looked into that at all?
We have done research on private foundation grants. We haven't successfully isolated one at this time, although we continue to, to do that research. We're not, we're not, certainly not opposed to, to, to funding for this project.
And if I may, just a couple of questions that, is there going to be a van for the project? Like some kind of vehicle that's going to be available for the vets? And is that something that's included in all of this or is that above and beyond?
We want to have actually a, like a zip car, like a shared car onsite for people to use because almost no one is going to actually have their own car. But also I think clear fat provides transportation.
Okay. And are there, would there be more than one person per room? There's studio apartments and.
One person per studio efficiency. They're, they're very small units, very efficient. And there's one individual, you know, little bedroom area, a kitchenette and a bathroom.
And the super, would the super be a vet superintendent?
Ideally, but it's not a requirement of the job. We do have properties where that is the case.
Great, thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Question and a comment. Is if we fast forward past town meeting, if this, excuse me, if this is, if this application is rejected and turned down by town meeting, what's, you know, is there a plan B? Would you consider coming back to Norwood with a different number if, if in fact the, the dollar amount was the issue from town meeting? Or would you, do you have other possible locations that would just move up, move up the line?
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. We, we have many deals in our pipeline. We try to do a couple of projects at least at a time and move these projects forward. Our preference and the preference of the state agency would be to know early what the number might be from the CPC rather than to find out as a sort of surprise at the last minute. Just because from a logistics perspective, it's easier to set expectations and plan around that formula.
Thank you. And then if I could, just a comment. Last, actually last week, Kristen Phelps and I took a ride to New Bedford. We visited, it wasn't one of the Caritas group homes, but it was a comparable site and it was, I want to make sure I get the name right. Veterans Transition House, Veterans Transition House, which they house in four different locations. They house eighty, a total of eighty-four veterans. We got a great, we spent two hours with the principals of the organization. It's a very, very similar, in fact, I think they, they and Caritas maybe share some services or you complement each other with some of the services. Caritas has a location in New Bedford as well, but we didn't, we didn't try to go with that facility. We were looking for a, for a comparable entity in a similar geographic area. We got a tour of the facility. They, the, the combination of four different locations is how they get to eighty-four veterans. One of those facilities was actually, as opposed to one person per studio, one of the smaller locations was actually a family, kind of family units. So that a veteran and his or her family could move it to the, move it to the, to the unit. And I did ask the question, you know, a bit, if the, if the veteran himself or herself should, you know, if something happens to the veteran, would the family be eligible to remain there? And the answer was yes. But that, in that case, that entity, as I said, they're, they're a five oh one C three nonprofit, similar to Caritas. They did receive funding from the city of New Bedford, from the city CPA fund. They also have a, I think, a housing trust. The city of New Bedford has a housing trust, which also complemented in as a comparable funding source. But similar to Caritas and what we've seen in this proposal, that the only way that that entity was able to provide those services was by layering, you know, state funds and local funds. And they even had a plaque in the lobby with, with, you know, gold sponsors and, you know, typical, either large organizations or, or just families that contributed. They, their, their main facility was in a, was in a building and the name of the contributors, you know, they had named the building on behalf of the, that contributed, the family that contributed to that facility. So, and they just touted, in that case, New Bedford is a different entity, obviously, from Norwood, the population and makeup. But, and they have a much larger veteran pool, if you will, in the New Bedford and surrounding area. They had something in the neighborhood, I think of sixty or seventy percent of the residents were from that region, either directly in New Bedford or locally. So in that case, it's a different environment, but they had not, you know, they, they presented a similar case, a similar service model as, as you've presented, as Cleopath and Caritas has presented here. So I think that was truly an apple, was an apples comparison for us. And they had just kind of a sidebar discussion, but they had nothing but good, you know, glowing comments about Caritas and how in this case, both entities, as I said, contributed, you know, collaborated and complemented each other. And the combination of those two, you know, tried to deal with the homeless situation in New Bedford and the general areas. So A, it was a fact-finding mission. It was a very, you know, educational trip. But it painted a, you know, a good picture what, what it sounds like, the, the model that Caritas is also following. Caritas has also offered to have us go on a similar trip to the A facility. Sean Brook's house is the one in New Bedford?
That's, that's.
Yeah. So it, not necessarily for us to go there, but that's an op, that's an option that's open to the communities as well. I just wanted to throw that in there, that we have at least kicked the tires, if you will, in a, in a respectful way. We've tried to kick the tires and see what other models there are and, you know, it works. And we saw nothing but satisfied, you know, veterans who were making, making it all happen with this group as their, you know, sponsor. Nothing but, nothing but good comments.
Great. Thanks, Joe. Just one final call for questions or comments. Tony?
First, thank you for tonight giving very much. And I want to reiterate how wonderful the project is. But I want, just to extend the comments that George really just said. One, one of the projects I found is in Mandol, CPA project, Father Bill's in Main Springs, Main Springs, ten years. It's a two point six million dollar project. They got only a hundred thousand dollars for some of their CPA for housing. But what they had was a one hundred thousand dollar grant from Home Depot, a five hundred thousand dollar grant from it, thirty-five thousand dollars inside and out. This is from the Preservation Coalition website. This is a hidden, you can find it all yourselves. What I am saying is the application looked crazy. I feel taken advantage of. I do. I feel taken advantage of by the application. I felt it was insulting. You did, you don't have, you have a five oh one C three. They are, they're a big operation. They know how to raise money. They made no effort to come into Norwood, all the banks in the area, was it the area? Like I say, because it's in Norwood, our CPA has to pay for it. And yes, to your point, we do have a couple of other millions of dollars, but you know what? Norwood was absolutely awful with conservation lands until the past ten years, until citizens rebelled at what was going on in this town. And we wouldn't have Bernie Cooper power in the same, same street lots if residents didn't rebel. We wouldn't have that either. And we're trying to fix up pocket parks and use any little piece of green space for open space. And we had done zero, nada, nothing in historic preservation in this town, which is why historic preservation is so hard. We rely solely on the private organization, Norwood Historical Society, who are wonderful and they've got the effort. Because Norwood had invested nothing, except for the day house, there's not one other house in Norwood on the, on the National Register of Historic Places, except for Norwood Town Hall, of course. We invested nothing in historic preservation and that's why that part's going to grow and it will continue to grow because of this need. On the other hand, we already comply with Part B. We've got more partners than any community around us. Have we done as much in homelessness? No, this is kind of new and that's why I'd like to be a part of that. But I do not want the town's one percent surcharge taken advantage of, and it is. And the fact that we have money is no excuse to give eight hundred thousand dollars. We have a town hall and the National Register of Historic Places. It means a lot of work. And guess what? Some of that could be financed by CPA, but we won't have any if, if we keep siphoning this money out the back door. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, buddy. Appreciate your feedback. I just wonder if the Randolph project is comparable to what we've got here, but I totally get what you're saying. So thank you. I appreciate it. Cheryl?
Can I just ask a Caritas a question? On CPC, when we go to town meeting with our project, town meeting members are allowed to vote money going downwards, but they never go upwards. They can accept added level funding like your eight hundred. What would happen if at town meeting in October, somebody made a motion on the floor and said they want to amend a motion to say four hundred thousand? And they get the second and then it goes through that whole little process of getting voted in. So say town meeting goes, you have four hundred. What then?
I feel like I can, I mean, I feel like. I feel like I can, I mean, I feel like they're going to have to go back and run the pro forma and see if they can do it, right? I mean, they can't answer that question right now, because they don't know what town meeting could potentially reduce.
We would have, we would have an immediate, frank, candid conversation with the state agency and tell them what's going on and see how we can make the numbers work, go back to our budget, and try to work with it. That's what we try to do.
It might be interesting for you to do a little homework with the state to see if there's other instances where the funding has been reduced and the state is either ponying up the funding or not ponying up. Because I think that's going to be very important to town meeting members, so.
Right.
I think we have a long list of questions that we need to be working on over the next few weeks. So are there any other questions? Just a few final comments? So, you know, we definitely have a list of things that we're, we need to address. It sounds like we need to connect with a few entities in the town to address some of that stuff. So I think that's great. So in terms of next steps, we have a meeting scheduled on the 4th. And the plan was, is that was going to be a public meeting where the CPC members vote on whether or not to move this project in its current state to town meeting. We have another scheduled meeting for September 11th. And depending on maybe some recon that we're doing in the interim, we could potentially present some of that information at that meeting. Or potentially just, you know, make the frequently asked questions more robust. So I think that'll be sort of to be determined based on some of the meetings. Are you folks in agreement with that or anything to add to that? It seemed like a good, okay, good. So more to come on that. So given that everyone's gotten a chance to speak and a lot of questions have been answered and it sounds like a lot of homework, oh, we have a last question, oh my gosh.
Quick one.
Yep.
Do you think the meeting coming up, are they on the website, your website?
Yes, they're on the town hall's website, that's correct, yep. Yes ma'am.
I just wanted to point out, I'm my upholder, Chair of the Finance Commission. Just wanted to point out that another necessary step in this process is anything that, any financial articles that come before town meeting, FinCom will make a recommendation on. So FinCom would probably be discussing this at our meeting, which is actually, this time, going to be on Monday, September 23rd. We typically meet on Thursdays, but for various reasons, that meeting's on Monday.
Great, that's important information. Yes, sir.
So I just wanted to clarify, your next meeting is going to be September 11th?
Fourth, fourth, where we're deciding on whether to move this forward to town meeting. And then we have another scheduled.
September 4th?
Yep, and then we have another scheduled on the 11th.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Location is probably in the town hall, but we'll. Availability. Yeah, I think probably your best resource is to check on the website. That'll be the most accurate information. Okay, great, thank you.
I was just going to mention really quickly, since we do have our town moderator here, maybe just to talk about the process for when this, if and when this eventually, this project comes before town meeting. Even if you are not a town meeting member, you do have the ability to register in advance if you'd like to speak for, against, or ask questions for the project. Is there anything else that?
Yeah, I mean, as long as you're a registered voter, if you come to town meeting, you can register to speak at town meeting by just emailing me, the moderator, or coming up to me before town meeting starts that night. The yellow sheet and the warrant will be out. Actually, my good friend from the town clerk's office probably can answer that question, but we'll be the town meeting members probably about two weeks before town meeting. And then there is going to be information, additional information meetings that are taking place in the middle of October. And those dates will go directly to town meeting members as well.
And the goal is to have the robust frequently asked questions as part of that package? Right, great, good, thanks, that's super helpful, I appreciate it. Okay, so we're all set, I'll need a vote to close the public hearing? Okay, we're all present, so I? Okay, great. All right, thanks everybody for you, but I think it was really productive and we got a lot of homework. Thanks, Karatos.